...the council of order. I've been coming up here almost sixteen years to these meetings and we've never had anything like that happen, so it's always a first. We normally start our meetings with a prayer. At this time, I ask Council Number W. B. Bould to do some prayers for the other four states.
Let me off from all of them so that we can stop shaking while we're not concentrating when we have a prayer. When you pray with... Ever watchful God, thank you for the citizens in this room who a few moments ago were concerned and caring for each other. We thank you for each one of those persons. We thank you that we had a learning system to alert all of us to care for one another. May we continue to have concern for our friends and neighbors and all of those around us. We thank you for our citizens this evening that are here. We thank you our employees. They keep us going day after day. We thank you for people who care and want us to be able to continue to move forward. This is our prayer this evening, Lord, that you would continue to watch over us, keep us safe throughout this storm, and keep us in your care. This is our prayer.
Let's declare a prayer.
House of Human Rights.
Here.
By Mel.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
And Miller.
Here.
If you just came in, there is an agenda over there. Also, if you wanted to speak tonight, there was a sign-up sheet. If you didn't get one, officer will bring you one. So at this time, we're on item number four approval of the minutes of our regular scheduled meeting in the City Council which was held in March twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, then they'll stand and submit it to you. Before we move on to item number five, I want to call on our city attorney who wanted to commence a comments, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a report on the Douglas Block settlement reached between the city and the Rocky Mount Edgecombe Community Development Corporation, or the CDC. The settlement was agreed to in July of two thousand seven, two thousand seventeen, but will not be concluded until January of two thousand twenty. But with the housing project that has been proposed for the Torker Street, there is apparently renewed public interest in the relationship between the city and the CDC with respect to the Douglas Block. The city and the CDC have a long history of working together for the betterment of Rocky Mount with a particular focus on the disadvantaged members of the community. In two thousand nine, when the city decided to undertake the redevelopment of the Douglas Block and reached out to the CDC to help lift this project, the city wanted to use new market tax credits and historic tax credits to finance a portion of the project, indeed at a private nonprofit entity such as the CDC to hold title to the real estate during the tax credit period. Tax credit transactions are highly specialized undertakings, so the city and the CDC bought in lawyers with expertise in this area to handle the transaction, and they set up a number of limited liability companies and partnerships in a complex structure that was required to secure the tax credits. This structure involved deeding the Douglas Block buildings and improvements to Douglas Block landlord, which was an LLC set up as an entity of the CDC, and leasing under a long-term ground lease the real estate under the buildings and the parking lot behind the buildings to the Douglas Block landlord, which was essentially the CDC. The buildings were severed from the real estate and conveyed separately from the real estate, and the real estate was leased, which is apparently what has to be done with respect to these tax credit arrangements. Douglas Block landlord then leased the buildings to Douglas Block tenant, another CDC entity, which subleased the buildings to the businesses which are operating in the Douglas Block. Private tax credit investors were brought in as members and partners of the CDC and related entities to supply the tax credit financing for the project. The project was completed and has been successful, and as you may have noted, there are a number of leases on the agenda tonight for the Douglas Block property. That's a very general summary of a very complicated transaction that enabled the Douglas Block project to be completed with tax credit financing. Now we move to the unwinding of the tax credit transaction. Tax credit structures generally stay in place for seven or eight years, and then the tax credit investors exit. They've gotten their tax credits, and the project has derived the benefits of the tax credit financing. The structure is unwound and ownership of the project vested in the local nonprofit owner, which for this project was the CDC or an entity controlled by the CDC. This was in early two thousand seventeen, and as the tax credit investors, the CDC, and the city worked through the unwinding, it became apparent that there was a difference of opinion between the CDC and the city as to who should own and operate the Douglas Block going forward. Documents placed ownership in the CDC, and the CDC wanted to continue to own and manage the project. The city's understanding was that the property would come back to the city, notwithstanding what the document said, and in addition, substantial mortgages on the project were held by the city. A number of meetings were held in the spring and early summer of two thousand seventeen between different representatives of the city and the CDC in an attempt to resolve the dispute. During these negotiations, it was discovered that a portion of the parking lot leased to the CDC would be needed for the construction of the event center, which was just getting underway. This brought a sense of urgency to the negotiations and resolving the dispute. So the city and the CDC agreed to bring in a professional mediator who was successful in brokering a settlement between the parties. The terms of this settlement are as follows. Number one, the CDC agreed to complete the unwinding of the ownership structure and convey free and clear title to the Douglas Block project to the city. The city agreed to pay the CDC a fee for management of the Douglas Block project in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. The parties agreed that all management responsibilities of the CDC for the Douglas Block would terminate, and the CDC would provide all documents related to management of the Douglas Block to the city. The city agreed to convey the vacant lot on East Thomas Street west of the Booker T Theater to the CDC. The CDC agreed to develop the lot in a manner consistent with the city's redevelopment plan. In addition, the CDC agreed the building permit would be issued to it within thirty months of the date the deed was delivered, and that construction would begin within eighteen months of the date the building permit was issued. If these requirements were not met, the block would automatically come back to the city and invest title in the city. The city agreed to make the following payments to the CDC: one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in two thousand seventeen, seventy-five thousand dollars only before July fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, seventy-five thousand dollars only before January fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars only before July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars only before January fifteenth, two thousand twenty. The city agreed to set up a Douglas Block advisory board consisting of six members, with the CDC having the right to nominate three members. All members would be appointed by the city council. This board was set up to terminate forty-eight months after the recording of the deed for the vacant lot next to the Booker T Theater. Just about done. The city agreed to continue the existing community development block grant funding for the CDC's housing counseling center and its business development center, subject to one grant availability, two annual appropriations by the city, and the determination by the city that the CDC centers were being operated in effective manners. The city further agreed to continue the existing relationship with the CDC with respect to the commercial development manager pursuant to the existing MOU entered into between the city and the CDC in two thousand seven. The city and the CDC further agreed to cooperate with respect to such future undertakings as are mutually agreeable between the parties, and each party released the other with respect to all claims related to the Douglas Block. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. We're going to move on now to item number five, presentations and recommendations. This is a presentation of a proclamation proclaiming May eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, as Kids Departed Day in the City of Rocky Mount, and we're going to call up Parks and Recreation Director Elton Daniels in just a moment. We're doing this at this time because it's time-sensitive. We've got to get it back into the appropriate people. It just says, "Whereas Kids Departed Day was organized and launched by the National Park Trust and is held annually on the third Saturday in May. Whereas in May eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, will be the night, national celebration of Kids Departed Day. Whereas Kids Departed Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks, public lands, and waters, whereas which encourages children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, melitus, hypertension, and high cholesterol. Whereas Kids Departed Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. Whereas Kids Departed Day will broaden the children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors." I need a motion to proclaim May eighteenth as Kids Departed Day in the City of Rocky Mount. All the players there?
Mr. Mayor, for Mr. Daniels, where is the...
It's actually not a one... It's actually not a one park. It's just to get kids to all of our parks.
A lot of you know we've got over fifty-five parks in the City of Rocky Mount, and we are a city with a lot of parks and recreation, so again, thank you for the work that you did. This time, we're going to have our petitions to be received from the public. I've got a number of them up here. I'm going to read my statement. If you'd like to address the council, you need to sign up. If you did not get a form, raise your hand. Someone will bring it to you. Any comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not individual council members or city staff. It is your opportunity to raise a question and present a request to the council. However, in many cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but refer the matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. We ask that you speak for the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated, and you'll be asked to sit down or be removed from the meeting. Time will be monitored in order to give everyone an opportunity to speak. You'll have three minutes, and I'll give you a heads up in about two and a half minutes. This time, Samuel Battle.
Good evening. My friend Warren Dodger could not be here today, and I say I let everyone that the wind change or truly blow. Groups that do not know each other, other than just a few short weeks ago, working together for the good of the city. Together, we will prevail. Would not... I mean, won't you join us? Take a positive step with us, and love Rocky Mount. Okay. I'm kind of upset about things that's going on with this white, white, and black thing at the city. You know, we got candidates running against each other, and people shooting, you know, messed up stuff, you know. I like a couple people, no matter if white, black, or whoever, you know. I don't really care about whether who wins at the end of the day. That's what matters, you know. And I'm not going to sit here and call people out, but I got to say this. The N W A C P, you know, we cannot allow ourselves to go at another African American in a way that he favors one upon another, favors another one. We cannot do that, because if the N W A C P stands for black people, we cannot attack each other. And that's why I'm tired of attacking each other. For what reason? It's not good for the black community, you know. I don't care at the end of the day. You know, the whole Rocky Mount is talking about this issue about the stuff on Facebook. You know, you can post it. That's cool. You can post it whatever. But at the end of the day, we got people that's coming up. We got grandkids. Everybody got kids. And that's five years they might be graduating, and that's four years they might be graduating. But at the end of the day, we can't let the kids see what's going on. Kids are ready to, you know, get into this politics stuff too, because changes need to happen. But we can't keep attacking each other, man. It ain't good. People are talking about it in the streets, man. We cannot do that. So I ask the N W A C P that are already... Thank you, Rube. But at the end of the day, we can't keep sending shots like that. We cannot keep sending shots like that.
I have thirty seconds.
Okay. You're done.
Randy Adcox.
Good evening to all of you. Good to be with you tonight. You know, I was honored and privileged to be a part of a couple of meetings in the last couple of weeks. I have some concerns in Rocky Mount. And I got to tell you, they were both very productive. They were black, white, men, women, young, and some of us not so young anymore. But they were very productive in a sense that we had open and honest discussion and dialogue about some of the issues in Rocky Mount, and it wasn't a gripe session. Neither one of the meetings were for that matter. We made a point of saying let's keep it positively upbeat, and I was very encouraged by some of the things that took place, some of the thoughts that were expressed. And these meetings focused on several things. Certainly, some of the impoverished neighborhoods in Rocky Mount. There's been a lot of talk over the last year or so about the impoverished neighborhoods, but they're there. We all know they're there. I mean, Rocky Mount has some people doing very well. We also have some who are struggling. And, you know, I realize the city and the council is doing some things in your own circles to address these things, but I just want to put it out there that some of the citizens are too. Some of us are working to try to help in some of these impoverished neighborhoods. You know, we're trying to work toward bettering relations in Rocky Mount, particularly race relations. I happen to agree with Mr. Battle that it does no good to tear each other down, whether it's black against white, or black against black, or white against white. That's nonproductive and hurt us all in the long run. But there's some things that the city can do, and I'd like to see the city move forward to some of the things similar to what we did last summer with the public forums that we're having at Booker T Theater. I made all four of those meetings, and they were productive. I think they were very insightful. They were helpful. Everyone, even though we didn't always agree on all the topics that were discussed, everyone was very polite and civil. And I think similar type meetings that focused on race relations and how to help the impoverished communities and how we can better work towards helping our fellow neighbors and fellow citizens, I think is something worthwhile to do. We don't have to hire anybody from outside to come and provide these forums. I mean, the city's got the facility already. If you guys would just schedule it, I'm sure we can have the rooms full at each meeting, and it won't cost the city a dime. Just some good citizens working to make this place better for all of us. Thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am, it is.
Sorry. If anyone wanted to know what a Caucasian lady looks like when she gets out of the shower, that I... Didn't mean for that to happen, though. The other week, I went down to that Torgara Low Income Housing meeting. Very, very informative. When I first heard about it, I thought, you know, that's great to put it right there, because if you didn't have a car, you could kind of walk to every different place that you need to go to. And then some lady, at least one lady, from Edgecombe Community College said that they had bought some little tiny pieces near that property because they thought it was going to be a parking area that they really needed for their students. And whatever brainchild thought changing the park in downtown, like the slats looking thing, and make it so that you have to parallel park. I don't know if that was more space or not for parking, but that was nothing a poor idea. But then when they started talking about the parking and near the event center, there's not much parking and stuff, I thought, well, you know, that's a pretty smart idea. They could put maybe a couple level garages, or a garage with some others, in that one spot, and that could help everybody. And then somebody brought up, there were three properties that had been given to these people from Chapel Hill that were so smart, and a place, sixty-four business section, they said was one of the places, and I don't know where the other place is, but that's a big chunk of land. And they said it was a couple of miles less than get to a grocery store or something. But some other really smart man said, well, why couldn't they build a grocery store on that section too? Well, duh, that's a great idea. So I think maybe the city might think twice about not using the downtown little piece of area, and then they could have a little bit more open area. Okay. If they went ahead and put a grocery store at the sixty-four thing, and then they could put a really nice low-income housing thing right there. And also, I think that forum thing for just talking, getting everybody together would be a great idea. And don't spend all that big bucks for, you know, getting somebody out of town to tell a citizen circle or something. And please don't litter. My church cleaned up Sunset, and I cleaned up front of my shop on three oh one. Don't litter.
Nehemiah Smith.
Unity is never, is not, and never has been, a one agenda endeavor. In reality, it is an opportunity to promote shared values and beliefs, and yet, before we can even breach the subject of unity, we must first identify the issue that has caused or fueled the discord. New organizations and other groups are now sprouting up in our city, calling for unity, calling for a coming together. But no one wants to deal with the root issue, race. We say we want unity, but we have yet to sufficiently deal with race. We want a bountiful harvest without turning over the soil, without tearing the ground. And I tell you, my fellow citizens, that is and always will be an exercise in futility. I'm currently reading German theologian Dietrich Bonhoeffer. He says of faith in community, and I quote, "Let him who cannot be alone beware of community. Let him who is not in community beware of being alone. Each by itself has profound perils and pitfalls. One who wants fellowship without solitude plunges into the void of words and feelings, and the one who seeks solitude without fellowship perishes in the abyss of vanity, self-infatuation, and despair." End quote. In this community, we must endeavor to deal honestly with the issue that divides us, and then we can honestly face the rising sun of a new day begun. Thank you.
Nehemiah, Nehemiah just came up. Bronson Williams.
Good evening to me and council. What I wanted to address today is, I wasn't going to address anything until we had this situation to occur this evening, and that is that when I went through the planning and inspection department, I was required to put some emergency exit lights up and some floodlights and et cetera. When the lights went out this particular building, there were movement. So we look at the stairwells. There could be some issues, and so I would hope that the council would direct the various departments to look at egress in case this was to happen again, lights out for a longer period of time, that our citizens are safe. So that's what I wanted to address the council about today.
Arnold Gordon Bright, you want to?
I won't be the one. First of all, thank you for allowing me this few minutes. And, Mr. Clark, as I am talking about Memorial Day, I know this one will get peed, but hopefully by now you've got wind of my discussion. This Memorial Day is pretty special, and I'd like to try to make sure that one of the cities is aware of the potential of what this could be. But it's being hit by the Veterans League, as always sponsors it, and Rocky Mount citizens and veterans. But this time, we want to try to highlight it for one of our citizens, William Hoover Jones. He's one of three remains that were recovered from Korea. And if you've been watching anything, ABC came down. We also had Time Magazine come visit the family. But this is an opportunity to look at something that can bring some semblance of unity to our city by recognizing the history that this city does have. And I'm the one that will recognize also, there's always a racial element to almost everything, candidly. But at the same time, more often than not, is due to ignorance, and very few people are absolutely overtly trying to do things for race. This is a chance for us as a city to go ahead and show someone, put his step, a volunteer, nineteen years old, to serve our nation from this area. And as part of what we do in Jack Lawford Park on Memorial Day, which is May thirtieth, I'm on the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission, and Senator Martin is our institute, but he's also pushed forward to have the government come down as well. So with that said, I want to make sure that the city knows that we may have to provide a little more support than we've done in the past. And that might even be a good way to proclaim for Hoover Jones. With that said, I just want to make sure that the committee was aware. I solicit your support as individuals and also as a leader as we go forward.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for saying. Thank you for saying.
Antoinette Cutler?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I hope my steps didn't take up most of my time. I want to say that I am the president of the Hillsdale Community, and I want to thank Sergeant Daniels for a great job that have opportunity to meet him last week and talk about redoing our park. So we're excited about going forward, and it's a lot of work needs to be done. And we hope that the city will keep Hillsdale in mind in going forward, because there is a lot of danger out there with a lot of trees that there are just rotten, no good roots coming up. So I hope that make it a priority. Also, because of the lack of housing for women, abused women, and I myself coming from that area, we need more. Our sister's house is overcrowded. Most of the time, it is, it does not have enough capacity to hold women and the families. So I would like to know if there's buildings available that we could push forward in that. Thank you.
Antoinette Cutler?
Antoinette Cutler. And also, since my three minutes is not up, I want to thank the great job that you all are doing for the housing development downtown. I am all for it. I own the building at one-twenty-eight Tarver Street. I am working on getting in it and starting my business up. I'm looking forward to that. And I believe that housing downtown Rocky Mount would bring more people downtown Rocky Mount so that they can patronize us as business owners. Thank you.
Lash Daughtry?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Lash Daughtry, one twelve Ken in court. I wasn't gonna speak tonight until Attorney Rose commissioned the Rocky Mount Edgewood CDC, which, which really goes around transparency, which transparency is vital to ensure and maintain the public trust. Without transparency, government officials can avoid being held accountable, make self-serving decisions, and keep hiding hidden agendas. With that said, last week, there was the thing on the Tarver Street, housing or parking, whichever way you want to look at it. As mentioned before, there's been no housing in the ratio study or the tiger grant that we provided able to get. The public or the Edgewood Community College and investors have been misled. On October eighth of twenty eighteen, the City Council, General Item Number Ten, recommended the Tarver Street parking group with Edgewood Community College, but it was removed via consensus. February twenty-fifth of this year, added to the agenda, and it was not announced prior to, was the resolution that was voted on to partner with DFI to convey property. It is touted by the City Manager's Office, and DFI picked the location, but DFI shows crossings at sixty-four. This is not transparent or allowing the public any say-so before decision is made, or Edgewood Community College input prior to voting. Now, I'm direct Rocky Mount Edgewood CDC. I had questions back when the budget came up, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then seventy-five thousand dollars to fund a position. My questions were not answered. They were written questions. And then I stood at this podium and asked those questions. I did receive on Friday a copy of the settlement and some of the, the other information. But why did it take a public information request to get that information? And the attorney did read out the figures, but by my figures, it totals four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars that we're paying Rocky Mount Edgewood CDC. Then we're conveying the lot adjacent to the Booker T Theater with stipulations. And by the way, who's following up on those stipulations? Then we're seventy-five thousand dollars to fund the commercial development, which via email has not been filled yet. Then we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a housing counseling center and business development center. That's a lot of money. How can you call this transparent and good governance? We, the citizens of Rocky Mount, deserve an open and transparent governance. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that we have for tonight, so that item sent petitions be received when the public is ended, and we will go to item number seven, which is...
Mr. Mayor, before we go ahead, just a few things I would like to say. And I think I made everybody, you know, try not to talk, but I also said I was a direct message. Whether it's unintentional or not, I don't know. First of all, there was never a written agreement with Edgewood Community College that this council voted on. I don't remember seeing one, and I remember voting on it. There might have been conversations with members of the staff and with the college leaders, but there was no agreement that everybody voted on. It was never discussed openly. And so, for some of us that are sitting on the council, I'm just saying, we never had conversations. I never had, never heard that conversation. And if we have, okay, you're holding up a piece of paper, that's a little bit, thank you. But I'm telling you, when we started having those conversations about downtown development, we always talked about downtown housing, always. And I still find it interesting that the community college, some individuals at the community college, I'm not saying it's the whole college, would not want to provide housing for people that they hire and they train. That's interesting to me. Second of all, DFI looked at three sites, and they chose the Tarver Street site. We agreed with their selection of that site, and I still agree with that selection. I haven't heard an argument yet that can explain to me why we wouldn't want to have more people living downtown in a concentrated location, other than the fact that those individuals might be low-resourced and challenged. But everybody has a right to live downtown. In every city of America, every city in America, downtowns close out access to people with low resources. They don't have a problem with you coming in and spending their money, or by having avenues, their money can be spent. But very few communities open up their doors to low-resourced communities. Rocky Mount has an opportunity to change a narrative that does not exist anywhere. You go on any tour anywhere in this country, and they'll show you signs where people used to live, they'll have monuments erected to folks who used to be there. But the people that lived there and worked there and helped build up and keep that downtown solvent until money started rolling in the door, never had a place at that location. Rocky Mount has a wonderful opportunity to create a downtown where we have every income level, every persuasion, every intersection of society located downtown. That sounds exciting to me. I'm not understanding the placement of fear about people who don't have a lot of money being in similar proximity to folks who do have a lot of money. So I hope we can grow up and get over this unfounded fear. Let's look at the statistics, let's look at who Rocky Mount is today, and how to create pathways to move us to where we want to be tomorrow. Equity, inclusion, shared prosperity for all. Everybody should be able to get something from all of our investments.
We note item number seven, this is our consent agenda. Under seven, item number two has been canceled, so that we will not address that. Item number one was a request from Master Mac Halloward, Houston Baptist Church, to close one block of nine-twenty-eight East Highland Avenue. This is for ten to two on Saturday, April twentieth, for the church's annual youth feast or celebration. Recommended actions to approve the consent agenda inclusive of approval of street closures and adoption of the organs. Uh huh. Good night. Motion by Councilmember Nine, seconded by Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item seven is approved. Item eight, and there's a long list on them, so I'm not gonna read through all of them. You all got this in advance. That is a number of leases that the city has at this point in time. One is for Esther Mark's Law, one's for Sharon Romney, Medicare Pediatrics, another one for Kennedy Thicke, and that's the bath place. James Franklin is working to be in clients. Shemel Turner, Moses's Creations. Gary Sharp is the Hotline Express. The Chamber of Commerce, it's a train station, and the Railroad Museum. Recommended actions to adopt the resolutions authorizing the city clerk to advertise notice of intent to lease the properties. Uh huh.
I have a question before we move.
Second. Second, Ms. Miller?
In the past, when leases have come before us for space, I know at the train station, and I think in other city buildings, it's been, information's been presented, and so much per square foot, and I realize the square footage each one of these leases is given here, and then the monthly rent, but not the, the cost per square foot. So anybody who's interested in comparing them would have to go back and make that calculation for each one, which leads me to a second question. Are the spaces, the rents the same for a given building, the same per square foot for any tenant in that building?
I'm gonna say private, not. Some of them have different sizes.
I said per square foot.
Well, but even sometimes they may have longer leases or shorter leases, and that would all drive whatever you're putting in rent. So I'm assuming they're all negotiated separately.
And secondly, with regard to the lease for the Railroad Museum, the previous tenant was required to pay utilities, a portion of utilities equivalent to the utility bill for that building, divided by the square footageage each space, and then included the, the utility costs for the open space, I believe. So is that still the case for this lease?
Amy, you here? Yeah.
In my haste to leave my office, I actually left the lease agreements in there, but as I recall, for the Railroad Museum, that one is a little bit different than our other train station leases, and it does not require a share of the utilities.
Okay, so... In other words, the Railroad Museum has gotten a better deal than the previous tenant did?
I'm not really familiar with the previous one. I have to go look at it.
Well, they did require us to pay. That is Twin County Community Pride, which has the whole thing. Did require us to pay our share of the utilities.
Were we charging space rental at the Vets' Center?
All we have over there is just portraits hung on the wall. It's no space that we can do anything else there. And we had to pay for those in addition to our portraits that we already had.
I think that's why the leases are before you tonight, to either approve or disapprove, or if there's something you don't want to approve, then I would...
I'm not trying to stop the lease moving forward, I just want it to be equitable.
These leases will come back to you. We're advertising them, and you can't act on them for thirty days after the notice is good.
This is just to adopt the resolution authorizing the city clerk to advertise the notice of the intent to lease the property.
I have a question also, Mr. Mayor. Is it not true that the majority of these leases are renewals? These are business people who have been downtown for some time, for the most part?
Amy?
Yes, they're all renewals, except for the Railroad Museum, you're correct.
All right, thank you.
Need a motion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item nine is approved. Item nine is a consideration of amended and restated electric service agreement. This is a renewals at nine forty northwest of Boulevard. It does outline the terms and conditions settled electric. Current transfer exceeds the requirements and decreases contract demand from nine-hundred-six kilowatts to a thousand. What's that, KVA records? KVA is kilovolt amps. Okay. Recommended actions to approve the agreement, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city. Motion by Councilmember Miller, seconded by Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item nine is approved. Item ten is a consideration of certification by the city clerk of the sufficiency of petitions submitted for annexation. This is the CSX Transportation, its contiguous, and scheduling in public hearing. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution of certification of sufficiency of petition for the annexation, to adopt the resolution scheduled in public hearing from May thirteenth, and for re-instructed department Developmental Services to prepare feasibility studies. Uh huh.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, seconded by Councilmember Watkins. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. And most of you may be aware that they are doing groundbreaking for CSX on April the twenty-fourth. So hopefully you're all aware of that. Eleven is a consideration of order purification chemical bid contract. It does increase, increase with PNCO Incorporated for additional seventy tons of liquid ferritin sulfate. The recommended action is to award the bid as recommended, and authorize the purchasing division to issue a purchase order in accordance with the council's award. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, seconded by Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item eleven is approved. Item twelve is a consideration of rescheduling or canceling the regular city council meeting scheduled for four p.m. Monday, May twenty-seventh. That meeting falls on Memorial Day. Does it reschedule? Do we want to do it on Tuesday, or when would you like to reschedule? Any preference?
What do we normally do?
What we've done, I'm not sure what we've done.
Tuesday?
Tuesday, okay. Then we are gonna reschedule it for May the twenty-eighth at four p.m. At this time, I think we got one other agenda that we're gonna add, so I'm gonna turn it over to our assistant city manager. Again, I don't know how many people know, but our city manager's mother died several weeks ago, and her father died about a week ago. So she's been out of the office with her family, and hopefully we'll be back tomorrow. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Natasha Hampton.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Mayor pro temp, members of council. This is the MS Hayward project agreement. Council previously approved the general fund appropriation for the MS Hayward housing project of one-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand plus. And this agreement that's before you this evening is to formalize the agreement utilizing the general fund dollars that was previously appropriated.
Any questions on that? Here a motion.
Uh huh. Third.
Motion by Councilmember Nine, seconded by Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item twelve A is approved. I want to thank you all. We need to go back into a closed session because we got, we didn't end our closed session, so thank you all.
I just hear one comment about Mr. Jones, that it's gonna be recognized Memorial Day for his service in the war, Korean War, that his sister is Elizabeth O'Ree. I believe she's ninety-four. And since we are an NWA CP meeting, she's a lifelong member, according to this member that addressed us, and that she was also his sister, very instrumental in the Negro role, recognized by the Lincoln Park Restaurant. And so we are very excited about that, that Ms. O'Ree is able to see her brother finally come back to American soul. And so we thank you for coming to share that with us, and she is a very active person in the Negro role. Thank you.
Anything else at night? I need a motion to go into a closed session. Uh huh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Attorney client privilege, as far as I know.
Yes, it is. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you all for being with us tonight.